The June sixteenth, twenty twenty five Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item on the agenda tonight is a continuation of the prior discussions regarding the Washington Street and Beach Hill Road intersection. Assistant City Manager Dutte.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councils. Just here tonight, we're going to do a brief update on the Washington Street project or the traffic signal discussion that we've been having. So we're just going to run through a few quick updates on that. City Manager Cole will join me here in one second, but I'm going to go ahead and get started while we get everything rolling. This is the intersection. This is the Beach Hill Road, Washington Street, Danville Corner intersection that we're talking about. I think you're aware that this is this has obviously been designated as a high-crash location, this particular intersection. The critical rate factor is two point seven nine. Anything above a one is deemed a high-crash location. It makes that list. Anything above a one, I should say, CRF, as well as having eight accidents over the course of a three-year period. So any intersection that meets the accidents, number of accidents over a three-year period plus rises to above a CRF of one or above will get this designation. I think it's important to note something I've heard this intersection referred to. Just to be clear, it is a high-crash location, but it is also deemed as a location that or intersection that is most likely to result in either serious injury or fatality if an accident were to occur. So just to be clear on that, I've heard the statement that it's the most dangerous intersection or whatnot. That is not, you know, in the state, but it is absolutely at the top in terms of if there was an accident, it has the highest risk for a serious injury or fatality. This is a main DOT managed road. What that really means is that we work in partnership with the DOT on a number of issues, just like the previous conversations. That was a discussion regarding the traffic signal or even the demonstration project that was discussed before. What we're working as an example also is we are constantly having discussions with the DOT regarding this intersection or others, particularly related to tonight. We've had conversations as of today, most recently, as they with me DOT, looking for some permission, getting some agreement with them around some interim projects or interim things that we can do to help with the safety around this intersection. Number one, we've asked them to consider a reduction in the speed as you approach this intersection. As you hear, you know, about the traffic signal, that's something that would have to happen in terms of a traffic signal anyway. So we're hoping to get an answer from them and some understanding about if that would be an option, as well as looking at deploying our electronic signs, alerting to this intersection. We have, the city has a couple electronic signs that we are willing to deploy out that would say, you know, something, high-crash location ahead, dangerous intersection, something to try to alert operators as they're coming to that. So we're looking to get that approval, as well as working with them regarding more permanent signs that over the time when we work and get to the final traffic light signal project that's going to take some time, is there some things that we can do in the interim with, you know, metal signs, regular signs out there? So all those things are discussions are happening. And that's something, again, just as an example, we would need MDOT to sign up and work with us. And so far, they've been very responsive, very positive reaction on all that.
One thing that we just wanted to walk you through is just some of the history, just as, you know, because there's a lot of moving parts with different intersections we've had, corridor studies. These are the actual actions that were taking place. And I won't read through them, but you can see there's been a considerable amount of action that the council has taken, or the work done through the ATRC, which is through AVCOG, which is our group that applies our NPO funds to certain projects within Lewiston, Auburn, Lisbon, and Sabatys. So we tee these projects up for them as well. But I think it's important to know that, you know, going back in twenty twenty-two, we meet regularly with MDOT and talking about high-traffic issues at certain intersections. And so we had had a conversation with them back then. There was a policy shift within MDOT to look at doing some traffic demonstration projects at actual intersections. Prior to that, they were only really done for like bike-ped initiatives and some crosswalk initiatives, but this was an actual intersection demonstration. So we'd had this conversation. There was a good conversation regarding this intersection. And we were teeing this up. And so there was some work that we needed to do on our end to do some design. And so that had been under was we were working through that. But then during that process was when DOT, which has a separate safety engineering group within DOT, identified this as an intersection for traffic signals. And I think we shared that when we went through some of these workshops on that history where we were. And when the last meeting that we had with you, which is highlighted back in September, was that really we just needed some more public feedback. And because this does impact a lot of, you know, whether it's the businesses that are right around the corner, how does it impact those who live on that, on those side streets? But then how does it also impact, you know, I think it's one where, you know, you put your finger in the dike here, it's going to push out, and you're going to see some impacts and other intersections and what that turnarounds might take place and what that would look like. So we've been, we were gathering this information, gathering these facts from the public, several meetings that had occurred in March. We were contacted by DOT to see, are you moving forward with the demonstration project? Or what, because they were putting together their work plan, which included the traffic signal lights. And so city engineer came to me, asked me, what's our process moving forward? Not wanting to disrupt that, I said, we won't move forward with the demonstration project. We'll forward with the traffic signal lights so that we're in their work plan. So I made that decision, notified DOT that that's what we would be doing. So that's kind of where we're at currently. And so, and they are, they actually, as of today, and you can probably share that, they've actually contracted this out now, so.
Yeah, it's a perfect segue. We, just to demonstrate the amount of engagement we have with MDOT and that, they reached out today, gave us the update. In fact, our staff were invited to a kickoff meeting for this project. They signed the contract with the contractor to design and implement this. It was the kickoff meeting. Staff were introduced to the contractors and the basic project timeline. Right now, they're in the, I guess, the survey aspect of the project, which then leads to really help them determine the amount of right-of-work that needs to accomplish, be accomplished. That is probably going to be the longest timeline in the project to get things going. Looking at about an eighteen-month project timeline to get it to the bid phase of the project, and then another few months after that is bid and then contract. So about an eighteen-month, the two-year window from today's kickoff meeting to implementing or installing the new traffic signals at this intersection.
We'll continue with the, our priorities and our solutions that we're working through. I think, get that next slide. I think that we're really, we're working on enforcement. So as part of the Police Department's Traffic Enforcement Plan, they've gone ahead and they're pushing out information regarding drive safely into summer. They're focusing on putting some posts out, social media posts, where they're at. You can see one of these is actually right there in different locations. This one's actually in Washington Street. Probably in the last six months, they've done about two hundred and forty-eight traffic stops right in this corridor of Washington Street. So they are stepping up enforcement there, and will continue doing that, not just here. We have, we have, you know, this doesn't, when you look at our crash, high-crash intersections, this intersection doesn't even come on our list, right? It's not, it's not a high-crash intersection in the city of Auburn. As Dennis was saying, it's a, it's a, it's more, you're going to have probability of injury or death will occur in this intersection, greater than any other intersection that we have in the city. So that's, that's that, that information that I think is important to share there. So I think that's it. Mayor?
Questions by the council? Council?
Thank you. I saw a slide or two back that also, can you give me some more information, if you have any, in regards to the action with the Maine State Police? Are they going to also step up enforcement to help with Auburn PD as well? Because I saw that had Maine State Police list as well.
Yeah, I think that the state recognizes that. I think they'll work that into their, into their work plan as they can. And certainly as a corridor that, you know, leads to the turnpike, however, it's a separate, separate function within the state police, but I think it certainly will be on their list as well.
Other questions or comments? Council?
Thank you. I just had a question with regard to the speed limit. You mentioned a possible reduction. Would that just be from Beach Hill intersection to exit seventy-five, or would it extend northbound as well, a bit down Washington?
We'll be able to answer that soon. We just, we put a request to MDOT, really the request was, would you entertain this, which they did positive respond, positively respond, that they're willing to hear us out, and they're going to talk about it internally. So we'll have more details about exactly that corridor once we get some feedback.
Think about like when you come into, I think Route Four is a good example, right? So when you're coming into that first traffic light, coming into Auburn on Route Four, the speeds are slowing you down as you come in. That's what we would, you know, we would want to see here. And I think the state sees that as really something they need to do anyway. We're just going to recommend they do it sooner.
Great. Thank you. And then a quick follow-up to that. Is there any, at this stage, I understand way more info to come, any reason to think that a traffic light at Beach Hill would affect the, you know, reimagined Washington Street plans? I can't think of any reason why it would, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if you remember, part of this was to discuss regarding having the southbound lane as two-way, two-way on the northbound as well, but then have that be a closed corridor. So you're getting good access to the turnpike. Does that mean there'll be a traffic light in between there? Yes. I think that that's, is it, you know, optimal? Maybe not. But I think it's still, it's not going to impact your commute.
Other? Council?
I agree with that discussion about the entry, the first traffic light coming from the south, heading north. That sort of buffers the, slows down the traffic there. And what happens heading south, you've got this long straightaway, and it's forty-five, and people, the speed differential between the people on Washington Street way over the speed limit versus cars trying to do left complicated, left-hand turns across four lanes of traffic is just really dangerous because they're much slower. And they, the perception of speed, I don't think they understand. That's how we have these accidents. They don't understand that the speeding is severe enough to be deadly.
Yeah, we've collected data before, as you come northbound on Washington Street, traffic that comes off the turnpike. You just finished doing seventy miles an hour, right, or more, on the turnpike. As you come off, that immediate response for a driver is to get back to that seventy mile an hour speed that you just left on the turnpike. And if there's nothing that looks to slow you down, you tend to creep and use, by the time you get to hack it, you're doing a good seventy, seventy-five miles an hour. So we know that anything that we can do to calm those speeds leading into that helps start slowing down that speed further on throughout the city, especially that corridor.
Council?
Thank you. I know a lot of the focus has been, obviously, Danville Corner and Beach Hill. Has the DOT mentioned anything, or has any other consideration been with further down on East Hardscrabble? Because that, that is obviously a dangerous area as well. And I believe it needs attention as well, whether it be a turning light, slow people down, or we're going to put the same set of lights that forces people to stop to slow them down, because if not, they're just going to keep speeding until they get to Danville Corner. Because I know there's a significant line that happens, and even in the winter, if somebody's coming down, because that's a treacherous hill, during the winter, as you're slowing, coming down, that you can't stop, and there's a line of cars there. So I think a lot of consideration, not just the first area, but down to the East Hardscrabble as well, needs to be.
So to follow up on East Hardscrabble Road, based on a number of calls and emails I got from residents, I received some information from MDOT. It's, East Hardscrabble is not a high-crash location. They sent me twenty-year statistics. There's nine total crashes there over a twenty-year period. It's more of a risk, and I think we should separate out the discussion about Beach Hill and Washington and East Hardscrabble. Personally, I still think there's some merit in exploring the demonstration project at East Hardscrabble to prohibit the left-hand turn, because as traffic builds up, the risk we have there is the queues. It used to be I'd come up there, be the only one. Now sometimes you're hanging out into the travel lane, and the bridge abutment blocks it. So I think it's a very good point. I think there's going to be continuing risks there, and I think potentially we should keep exploring East Hardscrabble for the demonstration project.
Thank you. Yeah, I, yeah, I concur. I think we need to definitely not just say it's just up there. We need to look at down there as well and have a discussion with the partners.
Whenever, whenever you make a change to an intersection, you have to then start immediately evaluating, what is that doing to the other intersections and other arterials around that, that location? Looking at this will be important. So as that happens, now what have we done to that intersection? Has, have motorists started changing their habits to avoid the light by using East Hardscrabble? And if that's the case, then we have to, we have, we'll have to, we'll have to monitor that. And I think that should be part of our assessment as we move forward.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
So I have a few items, mostly just to follow up for clarity for people that made inquiries. So just, just to be clear, I think Mr. Dutte covered this in the beginning, but to be clear for people, this stretch of road is totally under the control of Maine DOT. The city has, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the city has no ability to change the speed, to put in a traffic signal, to put in any type of traffic control device, to block the median. All of that, we could suggest to, and we've had ongoing conversations and made suggestions to DOT, but the, the actual traffic control devices that go in that area are up to Maine DOT, correct? The other thing I think it's important to point out, because there's been lots of talk around town about the risks there, and I think the city manager pointed this out to some extent, but the information that DOT provided to me, and, and I think we talked about this a little bit last September with the demonstration project, is that while that's a high-crash location, the interchange at the Turnpike, the interchange at Kitty Hawk and Washington, basically, over the twenty-year period, have more crashes, and there's almost as many crashes at Hotel and Kitty Hawk, all of which would be areas that if, if that demonstration project had gone forward, traffic would have been shoved out of this intersection into those. The other thing I think that's important to clarify about this is, and correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding on this, but this demonstration was not permanent changes to the traffic flow at that intersection. This was an idea to set up, if you will, a test that would have taken a two-year period to determine whether that would have been a beneficial change in the traffic pattern. We don't know what the results of that would have been. It might not have been beneficial because it may have raised the crash incidents in these other intersections. And that, basically, what would have happened if the demonstration had gone forward, when it was over, we would have had the discussion about what would be done. There was no plan to permanently install any of that traffic control devices there.
Correct, correct.
And then the other thing I think that's important, Assistant City Manager pointed this out, that, you know, DOT is a very large organization, and sometimes different groups are doing different things. But if we were to do the demonstration project, which we now notified them we weren't, the traffic light is likely to have been installed before the demonstration project was done, and before we would have had an opportunity to understand what might have happened going forward. So at that point, we might have been back to a traffic light or something else and gotten their work plan that would take another year and a half to two years. Is that, is that a correct?
Yeah, I think that's, that's all accurate, you know, and we, we got some estimates that came in that it was around two hundred thousand dollars or more for the demonstration. And so that may or may not have, you know, even been eighteen months. And so, yeah, I think all those are part of the deciding factors and determining what steps do we move forward with. And so, and for the state, the state is, you know, they're working out FY twenty-six, FY twenty-seven work plans. And so, you know, I think it's important to make sure we don't lose that, that queue. And so we've been working really well with the state. I think the state's been very receptive to our conversations and seeing this as a priority for us.
And then just to follow up on one of Council Platts' points. So in terms of reimagining Washington Street, the installation of this traffic signal is more of a near-term item. So that's going to be a long-term project. It's going to take many years. So I'm assuming if in the course of that, they are changing the roadway in that area, they very well might change the light, but that's something that's years down the road, I'm assuming. Is that, that's correct? And then just my last comment is, to the extent that the police department can maintain enhanced patrols in that area, I think that'd be very beneficial, because in large part, the severity risk at that intersection is a function of speed. So.
Any, any, any other follow-ups or questions or thoughts by the council on this item? Thank you very much for the presentation. The next item is the Andrus Goggin River update relative to the FERC relicensing at Lewiston Falls. Mr. Cousins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It won't take much of your time, but I wanted to make sure you and the public are aware of where we are in the FERC licensing process. Last time we were here, a few months ago, we made the decision to file a document with FERC that would maintain our ability to appeal any eventual decision. We're not at that stage where there's any reason to appeal, but we are, we are finished talking about potential studies, and FERC has made the determination that they have all of the information that they need to start making decisions about mitigation. So at this point, we really switch our comments away from asking for any potential studies and really pointing to exact mitigation requirements that the city is advocating for to mitigate the impacts of them using the river to generate power. We're ready to do that. We've talked in our prior comments about some of those things, although they were, they were focused on, we want them to study or design an access point or study or design flows. At this point, we'll just be asking for specifics. And what's most likely to happen is any of those mitigation elements that FERC requires, they would require them in the license and then give them a period of time to design those afterwards in consultation with, with the stakeholders. So just wanted you to know that's, that's where we're at. We'll be providing comments specifically on the mitigation elements related to recreational access, recreational flows, aesthetic flows, and improvements to existing parks or access points along the river. So with that, we'll plan on filing those in July, but we would welcome any, any specific feedback. But we have, we have a lot to work with between the cop plan and prior engagements.
Questions or comments from the council? Is there any, any proposed timeline by FERC to complete their work?
So we have to provide our comments by right around the middle of July. And then Brookfield, the applicant, has until mid to late September to respond to FERC's comments and to stakeholder comments. And then sometime in twenty twenty-six is when we expect an actual decision on what's, what's going to be required. And at that point, would be when we decide if there's a need to, to use the legal process to appeal FERC's decision and ask for something, something different.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the council on this item? Thank you. We'll move on to the third item, which is a triennial review of water quality standards. And Mr. Cousins, that's you again.
Thank you. Yes, separate but related to the river anyways. Every three years, DEP is required to solicit public input about the water quality classifications of water bodies and rivers statewide. The last few rounds, there have been groups, cities included, Lewiston and Auburn, that have engaged in that comment process, supported upgrading the current classification of the river from C to B at various points. We meet Class B here in Lewiston, Auburn, below the falls, down to Durham, almost all the time in almost every location. There are very few times when we don't. There, in the data that was being collected as part of the hydropower relicensings, we had one excursion from that a couple of years ago. And it wasn't that there was a higher level of pollution, it's that there was not enough dissolved oxygen for a period of time, and that lasted less than an hour. In that instance, where we had continuous data, we could see that that lasted less than an hour. It was an August day in the nineties. We got a quick one-inch thunder, one-inch rainstorm event, thunderstorm onto hot pavement, and it dipped below that seven parts per million of oxygen right in front of one of the stormwater outlets. It wasn't a function of the water necessarily being polluted. It was just too warm to hold, hold that, that level of oxygen. There are a couple of other spots on the river that do dip below the seven point, seven parts per million. They call it a diurnal swing, I think. It's a very shallow, weedy section of the river. Late in the summer, August, September, when the water's really warm, those plants, vegetation growing in the river produce oxygen all day long. And then over the course of the night, in the morning, just before they start producing oxygen, again, the oxygen levels dip, and they drop down to six or six and a half parts per million, but not much below seven. And they're not for long periods of time. We do know that there are existing wastewater discharge licenses that are not, that are approved, that are in place, that allow for discharges that are higher than what we've been seeing, especially with some of the mills upstream, because they haven't been as active as they were. So in advocating for the class change, we do recognize that that could impact some of those discharges. But I think the, the point of advocating for the class change to be is so that we don't slip backwards over time. So future licenses hold, hold the discharges to the standard that they're meeting right now, because they're not discharging everything that they're allowed to discharge at this point. So we were planning on providing a really brief support, supporting the two proposals, one of the two proposals, rather. One of them extends from the Ellis River north of Rumford all the way down to Wurumbu Dam. Not everywhere in the river meets the standard. We have low-oxygen spots year-round in Gulf Island Pond. So my plan was to just submit a short letter of support from the falls to Wurumbu, that we supported a Class B change in that stretch of river. We have talked with Lewiston, Auburn Water Pollution Control, now the Clean Water Authority, I guess the name has changed. They can meet that. They can meet either standard. They might do things a little bit differently to meet a Class B standard in the warmest parts of the year, but it's not a major obstacle for us to, to be able to do that. So barring any objection, we would just plan on submitting Barring any objection, we would just plan on submitting a letter of support. I don't think it will pass at DEP, or they would have recommended it already, but I think it keeps awareness about the improved water quality of the river.
Questions or comments from the council? Council, writing?
I think one of the major reasons for this is our success with the stormwater and sewer separations. I think Lewiston is catching up with us. I think Auburn was really ahead of the curve with that. And I kind of question their methodology at DEP. I mean, it seems to me that shallow sections of the river with, you know, these, like you say, temporary drops in oxygen levels, that might have been occurring before we had industry on the river, if you could have taken measurements in 1700. I don't know that, but I wonder if their standard is a little too strict for that determining the classification.
I suspect that's accurate. They are considering creating a Class BB that meets it almost all the time but has some of those dips. And I think part of our problem is we have so much data on the Andrus Goggin that there are other spots in other rivers that aren't studied as closely that may dip below that standard that we just don't, we don't have it documented.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the update. That concludes the items that we have for the workshop. We have three executive session items which no action will follow, and my suggestion is that we move to those. So for the council, this will be item nine on your agenda. And since Mr. Stockford has arrived, I would suggest that we take up the second one relative to a legal matter first, which is an executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA, Section 405-6E, to discuss a legal matter. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Weisner, seconded by Council Walker. What will be my show of hands? All those in favor? The council will be in executive session.
Auburn firefighters, so he's just quite.
Oh.
That must be it.
Makes sense.
They're good at watching things.
It should be a bit.
The June 16th, 2025 Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Whiting.
Hi, good evening. Rick Whiting, City Councilor, Ward One.
Good evening. Steve Milks, City Councilor, Ward Three.
Good evening. Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Good evening. Ben Weisner, City Councilor, Ward Four.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Councilman, Ward Five.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Good evening. Anaya Eggy, Student Representative.
Good evening. Mubarak Abdullahi, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you. And a note that that Councilor Cowan won't be with us tonight. He's out of the country. And Councilor Geary was delayed from a medical appointment and wasn't able to return to Auburn in time for the meeting tonight. The first item on the agenda tonight is the consent items. There's one item, appointing John Consel, Cody Taylor, Dominic Chassie, and Trevin Ritchie as constables with firearm for the Auburn Police Department. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Council Platts, seconded by Councilor Walker. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor, opposed, five having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the January 2nd, 2025 regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Platts. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor, opposed, abstain, four having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, and one abstention. And to clarify for the public, Council Weisner was not at the meeting, so he is abstaining from this item. And the motion is adopted. We'll move on to communications, presentations, and recognitions. So the first item tonight is to recognize Student Representative Anaya Eggy. And if you would come up here. So as many of you know, the council made a special effort to engage youth and have student representatives on the city council. Anaya was the first one to step forward and volunteer. Hopefully, it's been a very good learning experience over the last year. We've really appreciated having you here and Mubarak having in here as well. But having student representatives, we wish you best going forward. Headed to Middlebury, as we understand, graduation's over, so we wish you the best. We thank you again very much for your attendance and participation in the council. And we have a certificate and we have this plaque in recognition of your exemplary service as Student Representative for the Auburn City Council, June 16th, 2025. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next item is a recognition of the YMCA Director and CEO, Steve Wallace. Unfortunately, Steve is unable to be with us tonight, but we have a few comments. And tonight, we honor Steve Wallace for a lifetime of dedicated service to his country and community, and especially for his transformative leadership here in Auburn. Steve's journey began with 21 years in the United States Marine Corps, where he served with distinction, completing seven overseas deployments, including three combat tours. Steve rose to the rank of Chief Warrant Officer, and he held key leadership roles across the country and earned multiple commendations, including the Naval Air Crew and Combat Air Crew insignia. After retiring in 2025, Steve returned to Maine with his wife Rochelle and continued his commitment to public service. He led the Chamber of Commerce, supported transitioning veterans, and was recognized as Maine's Chamber Executive of the Year. In 2014, Steve became CEO of the YMCA of Auburn and Lewiston. Under his leadership, the Y expanded programming, secured over $2.5 million in funding, had rebuilt after major setbacks, and launched key partnerships from Camp Connors relocation to youth programs with Lewiston Housing and wellness initiatives with CMMC. He also served for several years on the Auburn PAL Board of Directors, supporting local youth through mentorship, recreation, enrichment programs. Steve Wallace has been a wonderful partner to the city of Auburn. His legacy in Auburn is one of vision, resilience, and lasting impact. On behalf of the city council and the people of Auburn, we thank Steve and Rochelle for their commitment to our community and wish them the very best in retirement. We have a key to the city to present to Steve, and we'll make sure he gets it. And I would ask everyone to join us in applauding Steve for his years of commitment to the city of Auburn. The next item is communications from the clerk. So for the official election results from the school budget referendum, the turnout was 830 voters, or 5%. 609 voted to approve the school budget, 219 were against. And to the question of continuation of the school budget validation referendum, 561 voted to continue the validation referendum process, and 238 voted against. The turnout, as we always are, for the school budget validation was disappointing, but the clerk noted that it's going in the right direction. We only were expecting a 4% turnout. We got five, and hopefully we'll continue year over year to expand so that people come out and make their voice known. Also from the clerk noting that with the municipal election cycle coming up this fall, nominating petitions are available from the clerk's office starting on July 7th, when they open at 8:30 in the morning, and those nomination petitions have to be returned by August 21st. Further from the clerk, she sent notice of resignation of Mr. Musella from the Auburn Sewerage Board of Trustees. He was a new appointee, but has found with his military and family commitments, he was unable to fulfill the responsibilities and has resigned, and the clerk has posted that opening. With that, the final communication is, I believe... We'll do it. Yeah. So apparently, relative to the septic inspections for tier-two staff, isn't present now. We'll provide that at the next council meeting. With that, we'll move on to the first open session of the night. If there's members of the public that would like to address the council on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Hello. My name's Eric Santos. I live at 75 Roy Avenue. I live and work here in Auburn, but before, I grew up in Old Orchard Beach, where I advocated while I was attending the middle and high schools to get a public skate park built. And I would love to do the same here in Auburn. And if there's anyone that would be in support of that, I'd love to talk to you, because one town over, I was just at the Lewiston Skate Park, and in my opinion, it's still the best park in the state of Maine today, and I think we could easily rival that. And yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Not seeing any, the open session is closed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Order 5406162025. It's the Community Development Block Grant Home Consortium Action Plan for Program Year 2025. This will be for public hearing this evening. Mr. Holmes, do you want to give a quick overview of the purpose of the Consortium Action Plan? Mr. Mike.
How are you? Good evening. You have in front of you the six-year of our five-year CON plan, action plan. We have an extension from HUD for this year. We put forward this action plan under the extension so that we can complete and participate in the comprehensive plan that the city's going through now, so we can have a more robust five-year plan moving forward. If you haven't seen it before, this is the use of our HUD funds, our home dollars, our CDBG dollars. The info sheet will cover what we have for the budget. It does include the Lewiston share, it includes our CDBG and our home share, while we still have funding. If you have any questions, let me know.
Before we move on to the questions from the council, we'll open the public hearing. Is there, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on the CDBG Home Consortium Action Plan for Program Year 2025? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion to accept the plan?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Platts, seconded by Councilor Walker. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor, opposed, five having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is an associated matter, which is Order 5506162025, authorizing the city manager to sign the Auburn-Lewiston Consortium Mutual Cooperation Agreement to renew the consortium under the Home Investments Partnership Program. This will be valid for a three-year period. For clarification for the council and members of the public, as Mr. Mike said, Auburn and Lewiston cooperate together for the home funds. They are administered through the office here in Auburn, and this is the underlying agreement between Lewiston and Auburn to administer the funds. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Whiting. If there are any member of the public that would like to address the council on the consortium agreement, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment, excuse me, public comment is closed, just touched by the council. Council Whiting.
Just want to point out that this was required by HUD, that rather than have two entities to deal with, that they wanted to deal with Lewiston and Auburn together. So we're fortunate to have that relationship, and I support it.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor, opposed, five having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Order 5606162025, submitting District Five and District Six ballots to the Anderson County Commission for the 26, 27, 28 Budget Committee. It's clarification for the council. You recall, a few meetings back, we nominated for District Five, a member of the public, Tim McLeod, and Council Whiting, and for District Six, a member of the public, Albert Bergen, and Council Walker. And those nominations were forwarded to the commission and accepted, and this action would be to elect them to the budget committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Weisner, seconded by Council Platts. Moved by Counsel Weisner, seconded by Counsel Platts. If there's any member of the public that would like to make comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment would be closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is order 5706162025, authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement with the Auburn Firefighters Association, Local 797 of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO. The contract would be effective July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Milks. If there's any member of the public that would like to make comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is order 5806162025, waiving the $60 temporary food license fee for the Age Friendly Community Committee to hold concessions during the community concerts event held weekly June 18th through August 20th in Festival Plaza. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Milks, seconded by Counselor Weisner. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment is closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. The next item is ordinance 0206162025, amending Chapter 2, Administration of the City's Code of Ordinances, to create a permanent homelessness committee. This will be for first reading. Clarification for the council and the public, this comes forward to the council via the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness as a recommendation in their report to create a permanent committee. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt as presented.
Moved by Counselor Whiting, seconded by Counselor Platts. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel Platts.
I just had a question. Does, is there any carryover on the members of the ad hoc committee into this, or will there be a full new selection process for this committee?
There's no carryover. It's a newly created committee. The clerk will post these through the usual process. I would note that there is, I'll be making a nomination of the council for the city councillor. There's several ex officio members that are staff, and the other nine members, the clerk will post, and we'll go through the regular appointment process. Other questions or comments from the committee? Counsel Weisner.
Yeah, thank you. Through this, I know the ad hoc committee had somebody, or was supposed to have somebody that was veterans kind of orientation or affiliated. I would at least like to see somebody with veterans to be added to this. I know that might throw off the numbers a little bit, but I would like to see that. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that somebody with veterans affiliations be added to this.
So Counselor Weisner has moved to amend Section 2 of the proposed ordinance to add a additional member under Section 2 that represents veteran service organization. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Walker.
Well, I was going to amend the amendment possibly by saying, would it have to be an addition of a new person, or could it just be a requirement that one of the positions had affiliation as a veteran? I don't necessarily have an opinion on that, but just to suggest it, to not alter the current number of appointees.
I don't think there's anything special about the number of people. I think the number was derived by thinking of appropriate categories. At least for me personally, I think it's fine to add another member representing veteran service.
Then I support Counsel Weisner's amendment.
My thought would be to have somebody that's specifically veteran services, that everyone's tied to a specific, like you see shelter services or housing services, at least somebody in the veteran community or veteran services that could help add to it.
Something like that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? So the question is to amend. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll return to the main motion as amended. Is there further discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor?
Mayor, it's a roll call.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Milks.
Yes.
Counselor Weisner.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Platts.
Yes.
Counselor Whiting.
Yes.
Five having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll move on to reports. So a few items. Several of us, members of the council and I, attended the grand opening at the Kitty Hawk Apartments, which was the opening of Phase 2. Great job down there. Continued investment by the Sasseville family. It was kind of unfortunate that all the news coverage of this was simply about their temporary delay in starting the next building, given the uncertainty in the economy, but they're very nice facilities, very handy to the turnpike, and they've done a great job there. Counsel Walker and I attended the Auburn Adult Education Graduation. It's always very inspiring. He and I were talking after the meeting, the stories for some of the graduates and the commitment it takes for them to decide to do this and move forward is really inspiring. It was a great event for all the graduates. I would like to recognize Mr. Brencheck from Economic Development. I attended the latest manufacturers' meeting, as all of them, very well attended by the Manufacturers Association, people from the state. Very interesting discussion about how the RU Institute can help manufacturers in the Lewiston-Auburn area apply advanced manufacturing techniques using artificial intelligence to improve their operations. Several of us, Counsel Whiting and I, attended the Ocean State Job Lot Ribbon Cutting. Great to see them filling some empty retail space up on Center Street. They made a nice donation to the YMCA for their back-to-school program. And lastly, today was the second technical meeting for the Airport Master Plan. They are quite far along, and they'll be in the near future here, ready to present to the board. And when they do, we'll have them provide a workshop update to the council. They've done a considerable amount of work, and I think they will have a good forward-looking plan for the airport. That's all I have with that. Counsel Whiting.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just echo your remarks on Ocean State Job Lot. They have a lot of inventory, nice new store, welcoming them to Ward 1. And also, congratulations to Steve Wallace on his retirement from the Y. Did a great job.
Nothing tonight?
Counsel Weisner.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Walker.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, age friendly, this Wednesday night coming, let's see, I'm on Monday, yeah. Wednesday night coming, we will be over here at the Festival Plaza when Milch Simon is there, providing we don't get rained out. And we'll be selling a few things there to the, we hope, the big crowd that shows up. On the 24th, which is Tuesday night, we will have our meeting at the United New Auburn Association, Rolle Steiner. Our school superintendent and the assistant superintendent will be there, hopefully, to speak to the crowd that shows up. Also, the Neighborhood Watch Meeting on the 26th of June, Thursday, at Sixth Street Congregational Church, 6 o'clock. Hopefully, we see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Platts.
Thank you. I've got a few updates from the school department. First off, two weeks ago, at the school department meeting, there was a nice retirement recognition ceremony for the educators and staff members who are leaving the department this year. Just to point to note, we had two employees this year who were retiring with over 40 years of service to the Auburn School Department, and an additional five retiring with over 20 years. So always moving to be able to wish these folks well on retirement. Next up, just congratulations to everyone who worked hard in the school department to get that budget passed this week. I think seeing public support for a school budget in a time when a lot of municipalities are not showing that same support shows that I think the collective of the school department and the city council is doing a great job to support our educators. Next, just a quick bullet point. At the Finance Committee meeting for the school department last week, we did have an update from Lily Gardner, who runs the Donald Gay Performing Arts Center. And just a quick update from there, that position had been created, that Lily could book events in the new center. As Counsel Milks just mentioned, we built this multimillion-dollar performing arts center, and to Lily's credit, she's seeing lots of events booked in that that aren't necessarily directly related to the school. So, you know, I don't want to call it a for-profit venture, because it's still the school department, but in the past school year, Lily was able to book nine large-scale events that, in addition to covering the cost of Lily's position, generated $10,000 for the school department. Next year, already, Lily's got 20 events booked. So it's been a successful experiment for the school department. Lily's looking at how to train other people to use that technology and that equipment so she doesn't have to be there at all the events, but it's been a very successful exercise in how to cover our costs. So small win, but I always like to highlight those. And lastly, last week, we did have a meeting of the Facilities Subcommittee, and this is the Subcommittee. I'll be reporting on this a lot, because it's items that we're all very interested in at the city council level. This is the committee that is exploring the transition of Auburn Middle School to a 6, 7, 8 provider, as opposed to just 7 and 8. In that meeting last week, we heard from Harriman, who's the architect and engineer of record for that project, and they laid out a timeline for what the exploratory process will look like. I guess, again, just a couple bullets. In the short term, this summer would be spent getting community feedback. So there's multiple meetings scheduled for the public, for educators, for stakeholders, community feedback as to what that transition might look like and how it might affect different groups. And based on the outcome of this summer, the school department would then have the opportunity to push forward or to not push forward. The hope is that everything sounds right, looks right, smells right, and we do push forward. And if we did, the current plan as outlined by Harriman would put a fall 2028 opening of the 6th grade at the middle school. So I'm happy to get into that timeline with any counselors or any members of the public who'd like to learn more about that, but that is a public process on the school side. That's the Facilities Subcommittee. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Representative Eggy?
I just wanted to say thank you all, to all of the council members, and the clerk, and the finance director, and as well as the assistant city manager and city manager for welcoming me into this new position. It's been really fun, and I feel like I've learned a lot about the community of Auburn that I didn't know before, and it's been awesome. And I've also taken some interest in different political parts, I guess, of the city that you don't think about unless you're here in these meetings. So thank you all so much for allowing me to be in this position and for a great year.
Thank you very much. Representative Gulay?
I wanted to say congratulations to Anaya. Other than that, sorry. Other than that, I don't have much, because school's over, but I wish everyone a good summer.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Residents received a postcard of the CONPLAN process in the mail. Everyone should have received that by now. On that card, you'll find a QR code or a link to the CONPLAN survey. The survey closes on June 20th, so there's still time to take the survey. We really encourage people to get on there, share your vision for Auburn's future. If you didn't get the card or keep it, just go to auburnmain.gov, click on the CONPLAN logo right on the homepage, and you'll be able to access that as well. I want to also thank the council. As part of my credentialing as city manager, I attended the Gettysburg Foundation Leadership Training this past week. Excellent training for city managers across the country that attended. It was about 40 of us there, and just excellent training that they provided. Want to thank Dennis and the team for covering the bases here while I was gone, and so everything went well, but I really appreciate the team effort on getting things done.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. The second open session will be closed. The council has two additional items of business, both executive session, neither of which we anticipate any action to follow. The council will adjourn immediately after exiting the second executive session. So the first is an executive session pursuant to Title 1 MRSA, Section 405, 6D, for labor negotiations with the police department. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Seconded.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Platts. All those in favor? Opposed? The council will be in executive session.